Next is the approval of the agenda. We have the agenda in front of us. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Unfortunately, for some reason, we do not have the minutes for last meeting. So we will put off approving the minutes for last meeting to the next one.
Cindy, are the draft minutes on our website?
They could be.
I'm thinking if they're not, could we at least get the draft ones up there so that people who are interested have something to read so they don't have to wait another month for an approval?
Yeah, it'd be under minutes, Eric, and it would have been from February 9th.
Are you joking?
We did have a meeting. We did have a meeting. August 9th.
So I actually just did that. Sorry, I had a little computer difficulties here.
We could get to it when we get into that presentation.
Okay. So that brings us to the first time for public comment. Invite members of the audience who wish to come forward to make some comments. Again, as usual, you have three minutes. Please keep within that and state your name for us so we know who's speaking. Does anybody wish to come forward and make any comments at this time?
Can I sit anywhere? My name is Cam Chefforn. I live in Lockina from here in Council District 1. And the new website is nice. I was looking for a couple of things I didn't find, so I wanted to ask for those things to be added or more clearly accessible. And what they are is the urban renewal plans. So there were four urban renewal plans passed. They were also amended. There is a question about the accuracy of the property descriptions in them, but whatever, regardless of all of that, there should be urban renewal plans are what you guys can act on. You cannot act on anything that's not in them. So they need to be on the website and the most accurate one that was passed and the latest amended one, which may or may not be February 17, 2014 or 15, 2015. So for Columbine Square, there are also three urban renewal plans that were repealed. And I think they should be in an archive section so that we have them for reference. Prior to the plans, there were surveys, condition surveys conducted, and those also should be accessible for not just us, but for you guys. They need to be public and they need to be on the website. They need to be front and center. That is the foundation of what you can do. So I'm looking for those things on the website. But in my other column was the picture that's on the LIFT website is Littleton Boulevard. It doesn't even include Columbine Square, which right now is the only urban renewal area. Wait, I'm... I... That doesn't make me feel good. Littleton Boulevard has a historic survey going on, and I think that is the greatest value of Littleton Boulevard to Littleton. I don't think it's to make it look like everything that's being built right now in Denver. I could be wrong and people may disagree with me, but to put that as the picture for the Urban Renewal Authority, when your area is Columbine Square in the Bellevue Corridor, to me is... It bothers me, and especially because Littleton Boulevard has historic nerve, and that might be its best and highest value to the city. So a couple of comments. Otherwise, I mean, I certainly thank you for your efforts on the website. Just wanted to find those documents, and the picture bothers me.
Thank you, Cam. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, we will close the session of public comment. And next will be financial report, and I'll turn over to Tiffany.
Good evening. On your pocket, you have the August 31 financial statements. And as in previous months, there's really not much that has changed from July to August. The couple of things that I want to highlight is we did receive a little bit of property taxes in August of about $4.42 in property taxes. And then actually Wells Fargo changed the type of checking account that LIFT has, and so now you're earning interest from the Wells Fargo account as well as the Callow Trust account. So between the two of them, it was $162.90 or $163.03. $563.03 of interest that was earned in August between the two. And then the other thing that we did is we did transfer some funds from the Wells Fargo accounts... Excuse me, from the Callow Trust account into the Wells Fargo account so that we could do the transfers to the taxing entities for the reevels. So we did transfer $36,000 from the Callow Trust account to Wells Fargo to do the wire transfers. The wire transfers were done, I believe, the first week of September of this month, so those will be reflected in the September financial statements. So just a couple of things that I wanted to highlight. I think probably page eight, the last one, is probably the easiest that kind of reflects what I just talked about. It's the bank register side. So it shows...
Yes.
It shows the operating account and the Callow Trust account, so you can see what the ending balances are in both of those accounts as of August 31st. So in cash, there's $469,401.90 as of August 31st. I'd be happy to go through each statement if you would like, or if you have any specific questions.
Tiffany, did you say that increment this month was... Is that the 164?
That's totaled for the year. Yes, you've collected $164 in tax increment. In August, it was $4.43 in August alone.
Okay. Does the property tax come in intermittently and then all of a sudden a lot, and then intermittently again?
Yeah, so there's actually two due dates for property taxes. There's a first half due date and a second half due date. The first due date is February 28th, and then the second due date is April 30th. So we tend to see bumps in those two months. So it's actually the following, so a bump in March and then a bump in May is what we typically see. But there's still property taxes that are being paid throughout the year. Some people who may be delinquent or something of that. It's hard to see for the Columbine area because the taxes are pretty low, you know, $164 per year. But even at the city, we see big bumps in March and then also in May, so you see the concept here. But it does trickle in a couple dollars every month.
Other questions? I do have one more. I kind of want to go back in history a little bit.
Sure.
Not sure why I think of this last couple of years, when we talked about refunding the increments back to the authorities for the repealed areas. And a lot of this would have been before all of us would have been on the board. But when you calculated that, did you prorate any expenses that the board had incurred prior to the repeal?
For the each area?
For each area, yeah.
No, we... The board voted to give all of it back except for the fee that the county charges to collect it.
Okay.
So we did reduce it by the fee that the county charges. But above that, no, we did refund all 100%.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Tiffany?
I'll just remind you too, we did retain $25,000 for property tax revenues, but still will be refunded, and that's in the event that there's any abatements. We have until January 1 to file any abatements. So we'll be in contact with the county in January and February to see if any of those did occur. And if they didn't, then we'll refund the remaining motion.
Sorry.
Sorry. I've been on a roll talking to a couple of guys, so I'm just going with y'all if y'all don't mind. We did get preliminary assessment values for the Columbine area for incremental property taxes for next year. So they sent out a preliminary at the end of August, and then they'll do a final at the end of November. And the assessed value increment amount is $6,773. Now, that's an assessed value, so the actual property taxes that will likely be collected should be about $550 per year.
So you're saying $550 would be the increment?
Yes.
That's for what exactly? The entire area?
Yes. So I believe in 2018, the estimate was $168, $170, if I remember correctly. So next year, it should be about $500 or so.
Any other questions? Do we have a motion to accept the financial report as presented? So moving.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, if I would say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Community reports, unfinished budgets, kind of same thing. So we'll start with our website update. Turn it over to Cindy and Eric.
Okay. Eric and I met and went through all of the changes that we wanted to do. There may be some in here that you'll... I mean, you want to look at it and see if there's something else that we need to do that we need to change. I do know that I'll have to... We'll have to look when we get there, but I know that the repeal, those two are there. I think you click on them and then it goes to them. They'll be under redevelopment projects. And then as far as the picture, we can change it. And I know we're working on the Bellevue Corridor, so I don't know if Eric can find something that has to do with the Bellevue Corridor. That might be a good replacement for that one. We're just kind of looking for a, you know, a good picture that would be something that maybe can be kind of relatable to urban renewal. There's not a whole lot that you can do for it, so we can take a look at that and see. I know that they've probably got some things that we can use from the Bellevue Corridor plan.
Cindy, do you want us to comment as you go or save our comments for the very end?
No, go ahead. You can comment as we go, but the other thing I will tell you is as far as, you know, the comment that we had, we didn't have, so they're not on here, the things that led to the renewal plans. So we don't have all of the information on all of the renewal plans. I think, what were those? The numbers that led to them?
Explain it a little bit. I'm not sure what you mean.
Well, she had mentioned about the costs on their... What? The surveys, yeah. That's it. The surveys that would actually be there so that you could know how we got to the different urban renewal plans. And we didn't have that on the existing website, so if that's something that the board decides we want to put on there, we'll have to get those and get them in a...
Okay.
So that we can put them in there, the surveys on there that led to it. So with that, I think, did we scroll down to get to the next part, Eric, or does it go to about?
Yeah, so, well, this is the homepage here, so... And I could just kind of give you a tour too of some of the changes we've made, if that would be helpful also. But something new to the site is the LIFT news, so that gives you an option to post news or items that are less about meetings and more about just news you want to post to the website. It can be now done through this news link, just like a blog can be. You can add a post to it. This is the intention of this, so you can do posts as they go on. One of the other big changes was the contact us page. So we've verified, so we have the forum up and running and working. And something that I've noticed, just playing around with this, is each day spammers get up and are posting items to the forum, usually sales and that type of thing. So I've added a question to the bottom of it, just to kind of fake them out that says, "What is the Mile High City?" And if they... My assumption is if you're around here and you'll know what that is. So I'm happy to take it off. But it has helped a lot with the spam content that gets posted there. The other thing, kind of the big change, is in terms of meetings. So back in the day, we had this, you probably recognize this, where meetings were just put on this huge rolling list, that's something we inherited. But I've changed it now. So now we have a grid format, similar to the way the city works. So it's very easy to come in and add a new... Let's see, does that... Let me scroll down. There we go.
You might... Yeah. Show them also that the video is there too.
Yeah.
So it's all there. You don't have to go looking for the video, which is not... It's something we used to have to do. You have to go find it and then you kind of...
And where are the minutes? We... I would think we would want the minutes to be part of that grid.
We are... I thought that we're up there. We do have...
Okay.
We do have a section called minutes. So we can kind of...
I don't know if that's our question or what that is. Right. So the minutes and the documents are all here under documents, so those can be... So you can add additional. In this case, we have two different documents here under documents for that particular meeting.
Would you click on one of those, Eric, and show me?
Sure. So it goes to a... Anything else you need? Okay, that appears to be a minor glitch that I need to... It should go directly to the PDF document that is that item.
Okay. What I'm curious about, if we're looking at the August 9th meeting in summer... Well, that's one... If somebody clicked on it, would they go and get the documents for that meeting, which would be the draft minutes for July?
What I usually do is put what I'm given from the city clerk there, so I'm not... I'm not sure. But that might be something for us to talk about. Scroll down if you've... That... The meetings, the draft meetings, minutes for the previous meeting should be in there.
Yeah, they are.
Okay. So that there's the hyperlink and it should still, as you can keep going down.
So we don't have a place for the approved minutes? And could we add another column to that grid, Eric, that would say approved minutes for people to click on? And they can see the draft minutes by going to the documents?
Sure. Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, I would do it.
I think that would help make it more accessible. Either that or under documents, either place. If we want it more prominent, we can have a separate column, whatever.
I think people would appreciate seeing exactly where to go.
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. It's quite easy to do that, so... And the great thing about this is as time goes on and more meetings are added, they can go to other pages of this. So we can... Right now, it's showing 1 through 9 entries, but we can put a max right here. It's showing 10 entries maximum, so that can be expanded if one wanted to. Or they could go to the next page to see prior meetings back in history. So, other than that little... So all these items as well are found still on the media archive, so they're still up on the site.
Just go to the archive under it.
Yeah.
Then there are the ones that we had previously, that we inherited, basically.
Right. Trying to think of any other big changes.
Just go to the about.
Yeah.
Yeah. So the board is the first thing under there as it was before. You can click on the board, yeah. And we did add, all of you gave us a couple of lines, bio lines, which are there, and I did check the dates that everyone will be leaving the board. So that we have the correct dates under there, so you're... It goes pretty well there.
So we know that our number is up?
Yeah. Yeah, you know. It was actually on the other website, so... We didn't change that. Okay, so meetings. Can you click on the redevelopment projects? Because I want to see if we did what I thought we did. Okay, so go to the Columbine one, and that should come up and... Yeah. So that... And then when you click on that hyperlink, you can go to the full one, you know, the full report. Otherwise, you're going to get, you know, just the kind of executive summary. And then when you click on that, you can get...
Do you mind, Eric... I'm sorry, Cindy, go on to page 12. I'm wondering, the blight conditions, the survey might be there in the plan.
On page 12?
That's true.
So we may have what we need.
Let's see, 12 adds printed maybe, so blight condition, is that what you asked?
Blight conditions, okay. See if the survey's there. Scroll down another...
Sure.
No, they didn't. Okay. That's just what's in the law rather than the actual conditions of the area. Thank you, Eric.
Sure. Yeah, so as far as any additional changes, I'm happy to do whatever the board would like me to do. I think time-wise too, it's... I've spent $70 for some backup software that kind of saves the site in case of a crash or something happens. And then I've spent roughly 7.6 hours, so a little less than eight hours total on this. And I can't remember our quote that we did, but I think it was quite a bit more than that, so... Under budget.
Now let's look at the other, the repealed ones. Let's see what we did with the repealed ones.
Sure. There's a bit of delay between what I'm seeing and what you're seeing there, so that if it seems like I'm not doing anything, tell me. Suspense.
So I think, again, if you click on, you get the full report. So repealed ones are there now. That was what we had from the old website, so if there's any additional things we need to put on there, you just need to let us know.
There are some old, and I don't know if this is helpful, it's an old LIFT documents as well. We call them archived LIFT documents that are various items.
Cindy, have you thought about the repealed areas? For instance, the Sanofi had an original plan and then it was amended and then it was repealed. Do we want to put both plans on there or just put the amended plan?
I would put the amended plan on there. I think you would get pretty confusing if you're going to go through all of those different levels. And, you know, we took what was on the original website, so I guess I could assume, maybe I shouldn't assume.
That's the original.
That's the original. Okay, so we need to get repeated.
And I've got those documents electronically. I can send them to Cindy.
So we need the amended documents. So, yeah, they're there. We just need to make sure we...
So is this site live now? It is, yes.
Oh, it is, okay.
That's the spammers. Yeah. And I will fix those links tomorrow for you, so...
Can you click on contact again? Because I want to remember what we did.
And just so you know, I'm happy to add, you know, Kevin gets these when they get submitted. In fact, we can play around with it and I can send you something right now. But it can go to anybody we want it to go, so it could go to every... It's up to you, but we're not limited, which is like one person who would receive one of those contacts could go to.
You do have it now in the paragraph right there going Kevin. And then you're going to bring them back to the board or answer them if they need to. So we did leave the info one up over there and actually did get Eric, a person that came through it.
Yes, I have.
So does it get forwarded to you?
Yes.
I was wondering if you'd actually heard from anybody.
Just one person.
Yeah. And it was through there.
It's been out for about a week, so that's good.
Well, Eric forwarded them. Forwarded the person. Well, Eric forwarded them, forwarded the person that actually clicked on that one to us, because he, he noticed it when he was going through the whole process, that it was there, so. I would say that now, once we've got it, and we approve it, whenever we do that, we would take that info one out of there.
That's fine.
Because it's going to go to that website, and then you're, you're gonna have two different places where you're going to need, and we had decided that everything would go to Kevin, and then he would go through and bring it back to the board if he needed.
And whose, whose phone number is that?
That I don't, do not know, that came from...
The phone number should go away, because it probably went to the office of the previous...
Actually, I recognize that number.
And that's mine.
Yours. Happy to take that off. In that lift info, that address, is anybody monitoring that particular one? Because I do agree, that one, maybe one that was used a long time ago, but I, I wonder if it's even being monitored right now, I kind of doubt it.
I don't think it is monitored, so.
Is there any way you can check to see if there's anything in there that we might need to pay attention to?
Yeah, there's probably a ton of spam, but I'll, I'll check with IS to see if they can pull those emails that are in there, because I'm...
Maybe, maybe just the last six months.
Sure, I will, I will find out.
Two. No, that's fine. When you look at that, you usually can tell what's spam real quick and what's might be legit, before you click it.
Yeah, thank you for those points.
Any questions?
I've got a list of things that we'll change, we'll change the picture.
No, I imagine there'll be, as we work on some other things, you know, there'll be some amendments to this, but right now, I think this looks pretty good to serve our needs.
So if, this is live on our site, so if I go, I saw a couple of things that just weren't clean up, as we were going through this, then can I just send those suggestions to you, Cindy? So everything that we're looking at now is active on left, okay.
If you go to the left, lift website...
This is what we're seeing?
This is what you're seeing, yeah.
And if you find that there's, I've got the surveys as well, but there's any other information on the old plans, ask, I may have it.
Okay, like I said, I, we were just dealing with what we had on the original website, so if there's anything else that has to do, and then when you get into that one, Archive Documents, there may be some things in there, too, but I don't know that we've ever gone through them, so maybe everybody wants to take a look at that, pull it up, especially you, Carol, you know, that you may be...
I've gone through it about a year ago, and documented what's missing, so after we get this thing set up the way you want it, then maybe we can start working on it a little at a time. Good job, Cindy.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Eric is the...
Good job, Eric.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
So the next thing on our agenda is the update attorney search.
Before we get to the proposal, just a few things, first off, update on the advertising, we had a budget for 350, we spent 300 of that, so a little bit under budget there. I did go to the Urban Renewal Training, and Commerce City presented on a project they had specifically concerning the Dog Tracks area, and then they had their, the city attorney there, and also the outside counsel that helps the board out, and it sounds like the arrangement that they have is very much what we've been talking about, where they described the city attorney really acting as a general counsel advising governance, and the outside counsel is quote-unquote "special counsel," who probably had a limited role upfront, but then once a project was on the table, really, really took a heavy role with negotiating and putting things together. So it sounds like what we've been talking about doing, that I think Steve recommended at the very beginning, is something that boards have had success with. As far as the proposals received, we did only receive one, there, like I said at the last meeting, there were four inquiries, four requests for the proposal for the RFP, and one responded, so it's kind of a bummer that only one came through. The good news is that it is a reputable firm that at least meets the minimum requirements that we set out, so I'll say at the beginning that Jay and I both believe it's, it's worth moving forward with an interview process, with the understanding that it doesn't change anything, we don't have to hire them, we can proceed with another RFP, or not hire at all, even if we move forward with the interviews. As far, I don't think most of you have the opportunity to look at these, since you just received them tonight, but you will, you will see a few things I'll point out. They have, are essentially, they're proposing a team, which is what I would expect from a firm like this to do, with a lead partner, and the experience of those partners is roughly outlined in the second tab, the letter of interest, and Jennifer Stenman is the lead partner that they're recommending, she has pretty extensive experience in development in commercial real estate, so I think certainly probably qualified to manage projects on our behalf. The senior advisory team is where you see a lot of urban renewal experience, specifically with the Denver Urban Renewal Authority, there's a past chair of the board, and then also an individual who handled litigation for Gura. I will say about the senior advisory team, for the most part, those are rates we probably don't want to pay. But the experience is nonetheless there. And then, and then the team, which is a variety of experiences, some touching on urban renewal, real estate, special districts, et cetera, et cetera. They specifically identified the first one listed under Team Vika, Chen Drashakar, as the individual that they would send to the meetings if they requested, if we requested somebody to come to one of these meetings. So if we did interview, I would recommend that we brought in both Ms. Stenman and Mr. Chen Drashakar, to make sure we were able to get both of them. And as far as the rates go, they're on the last page of that section, they are on the high end, they're not the highest that could exist, but they are high, I can't pretend they're, they're cheap. I would note that they say that they have a 10, offer a 10% discount on any invoice paid within 20 days, I don't know if that fits our accounts payable practices and needs on that point. That said, we can certainly talk to them about these rates, and whatever invoicing terms we need from them. I will say also, I do know this firm as a, on the client side, I have professionally been with companies that have been represented by this firm, so I do know them, none of the individuals listed here that I have had experience with the firm, and it has been positive.
Yeah, I wanted to add one more thing, Mr. Hopping, to, an issue that Mr. Hopping brought up at, at the last meeting, where we discussed this, is it's very important that we mitigate our risk, and right now, the process we're talking about going into is an interview process, and we're not committing the board to, to do anything at this point, but, you know, and there are all kinds of limitations before we wind up leaning on, on an outside counsel, but, yes.
Yeah, I believe one of two things could happen if we move forward with an interview, we negotiated an acceptable contract and signed them, or we declined and know more about what we want.
So it looks like if they're gonna send Jennifer Stenman and Vika, alphabet name, to, sorry, I can't begin to pronounce it, to a meeting, one is at 4:50 an hour, the others are at 2:55, so to have them present will be $705 an hour.
If we had both of them present at a meeting, but I think what they're recommending is, is that normally it would be Vika coming out if we wanted someone present at a meeting.
So Vika, 2:55?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
And I would just tell you, normally with the city, my position is, we only have a partner doing work that I think requires a partner's expertise. There is a lot of legal work that is done for us as an entity that I don't believe requires a partner's expertise, and in our agreements with firms, we make it very, very clear, we expect that work to be assigned to an associate, obviously, a partner's still responsible for, under the rules of professional conduct, we expect it to be performed by an associate at a significantly lower rate. There are very few, there are some things, but very few things, where I need a partner to perform that work.
The, the role of a partner, as I would expect, would be to review final product and be available if there's a quick need for an answer, and we, we don't want to pay someone to do the research, but as far as anything requiring a lot of legwork, drafting or research, that would filter down to the associate level, seems to be the one to identify. And he did, and it was a nice gesture, he attended our last meeting, and got a feel for what's going on here.
Which one was that? Which one?
Vika.
That was Vika, okay.
And, and for the interview, of course, we, you know, we asked to interview him and, and the partner, but obviously, you're not gonna pay for the interview, so.
Correct, yeah. And it also says they, they don't charge for travel time for two meetings a month.
That's big.
Which is, most people do, but, that's good.
Relatively, they live at the house or the office.
Yeah.
It's extremely compliant.
They live in Evergreen.
Yeah. Got your right schedule. Any further questions for Joe or Jason?
I'd say next steps, what do you expect to get tonight?
So tonight, I, I, like I said, I would recommend that we would move forward with an interview, so if the board found that appropriate, then see if we can get a tentative meeting date, and then we would invite them to come. The advantage of only having one candidate is we could probably have the interview and have time to discuss in their absence while it's still fresh in our memories.
So how does that work, from Robert's rules? Do we need to propose it, or do you want us to just let him do it? I don't know if we need a motion to do that, I think we'd want to do this in a study session forum, instead of a formal board meeting, so if we can set something up following the next board meeting, study session, that would be appropriate, I think.
Well, I, I will say that if we were going to keep with the timeline, we'd probably need to set something up in the second half of this month, unless we wanted to adjust the time like that with the RFP.
Well, I mean, I have something I want to bring up, and it might work with this also, so why don't we table that discussion for a little bit?
Okay.
If you don't mind. I will, on this discussion, I will, you know, I was at the same training session, both Bill and Joe, who've attended that, very informative, and one of the key things that came out of it, especially with the project that was featured, I mean, it was a very complicated project, and very complex, that, you know, the legal team was a very key component of that, I just want to, I don't think we're gonna get, we're not gonna get into something like that, we don't have a dog track we're trying to fill in, something new, but I do want to make sure we, we do partner with a firm that will represent us, that has the bandwidth and the knowledge to be able to support us if we move forward with whatever we do in the future, because you give misinformation or incorrect information, it could lead us down the wrong path. So I do want to make sure we do partner with them, that we feel comfortable that they have the expertise to provide us with advice when we need it. So, okay, so next, we'll go to the Applications, Documents Committee Report.
Okay, Jack and I were unable to find a time to meet, so we'll just wait until next week, or next month?
Okay, thank you. So new business, I want to talk about the Urban Renewal Board Training, that, again, Bill, Joe and I attended, it was very informative, and through that process, became enlightened on other things that we should be pursuing as a board that can help with this area. We've been focusing on Columbine Square, and that developer, that owner of that property, and thinking, we're gonna use our TIF money to incentivize him, or do infrastructure upgrades to get him to develop that parcel, and we can do more than that. We can actually, as a board, use that money and directly engage businesses for other things, and we can come up with a grant process, or fund projects with businesses directly. So let's say, we talked about, let's say, Tools, their, their parking lot is a disaster, and maybe what's holding them back on doing something with that parking lot, that when you get over a surface area, I think it's a half an acre, you now have to deal with storm sewage mitigation, that is very costly, and they may just be patching and filling that parking lot, because they don't have the money to actually tear it up and redo it, because they can't, if they do, they have to put in storm mitigation. That is actually something we can partner with them and say, if that's what's holding you back to improve this site and improve your business, we can help you with that. These, these TIF dollars can go directly to these businesses, and we can help them improve their sites. The businesses there on that, is it Lowell, or what, on the west end?
No.
Yeah, you know, the, the storefrontages on them are, you know, pretty dated, if they wanted to upgrade their store, their, their frontage, and how they, the front of their buildings look, we can partner with them, through grants and so forth, to help them with that. If the city takes on some sort of master planning or other programming in that area and says, hey, the street, the street scape needs to be improved, we can directly fund those with, projects with the city. So instead of sitting back and waiting for, you know, the, the one property to do something, I think we can start engaging with the businesses and start talking to them and say, what do you need to improve your business, your, how your business looks, your facility? Let's have those discussions, and what, see what we can do. I mean, there's some creative things, you know, if you, one of the ones, a big one that was done was Golden, they, their downtown area was an urban renewal project, and they helped a lot of those businesses, not only with their frontage, and restoring, you know, the historical parts of the buildings, but also if a restaurant wanted to increase their capacity or whatever, but their plumbing infrastructure was terrible, you know, connections to the sewer and stuff, they partnered with them through grants to help them with those things, and if you, you know, right now, you go up there, that's a thriving area. So I think we need to start looking at these other options, you know, we have 20 more, 21 more years on this that we can collect TIF, and we can do these things, we can, if we want to, depending on what projects come up, if there's something major that needs more money than we currently have, you know, we can sit down with a financial institution and say, okay, we want to mortgage this TIF amount, and get the money upfront, they, we pay them back on our TIF records as we get over the next 20, 21 years, so then we have a big block of money that we can now start doing something with these properties, with these businesses. So what I'm recommending that I do is, I want to bring in on a study session, someone who's kind of experienced there, is Maureen Fair, she is with Arvada, and she has a lot of information, she's actually, I just got this, she's one of the headline speakers down in, for Pueblo, for the Southern Colorado Urban Renewal Summit that's coming up in November. She's agreed to come and meet with us, and, and talk about these things, and share her experiences, I'd like to do that, she's available next Wednesday at 6:30, so I'd like to set up a study session for that time.
I, I think, that sounds great. One of the things that struck me, kind of as a bummer at the, the training, is I spoke with one of the attorneys that spoke, and I said, hey, you know, we only got one RFP, our own proposal, and we're not getting a big response, and she said, well, I... And she said, well, I think a lot of people in the urban renewal world would be surprised to hear that Middleton even has an authority, much less that it has any money to pay an attorney. And her suggestion, which I disagree with, was, I think you guys should consider hiring a marketing firm. And I disagree with that because I think it's probably best to do good, improve yourself that way before you hire somebody to pick you out saying you do good. But I think what you're talking about is a manageable way that we can do positive work, build trust in the community and where I think there are questions of urban renewals and track record in Middleton. And then, and then once we've done those positive things, then use that as a springboard to bigger things when there's, when there's greater buy-in and greater experience under the authority's belt.
Yeah, you know, in speaking with these other, like, because, who else was there? We Ridge was there, there were a big one Lakewood. You know, and they have multiple urban renewal areas or much bigger renewals, so they're getting, and in some ways, I think the city somehow kind of got the cart before the horse. And talking with these folks, the thing is, is that usually they have an area that needs development, they get approached by a developer, they start working towards what that would look like, they come up with the urban renewal plan, adopt it, and then start the time clock to do all the financing and everything. I think the city kind of said, okay, these are the areas, but we don't, we want to increase them, but we didn't have a real plan. Where some of the other cities, I think, were better when, in coming up with plans for these areas. And then they, like you said, they had good response, so they were able to springboard into other areas. And it helps when you've got several of these areas that you're working on, then you can bundle these together with, you know, power to have a manager, you know, a director oversee these projects. Like, that's, that's what Maureen does full-time for Arvada, you know, that's her full-time job. There's no way with just one authority here, we could have, in the area that we're covering and the monies we're talking, we couldn't have a full-time person advocate for us. But as we go down, as it may, we may have to look at, you know, can we bring on a part-time person to help us manage these projects as we go forward? But I think we should, you know, I think that's where we need to start looking. And I think a first step is having Maureen come in, share her experiences, give us some insight on how we would start doing this, we can start having a discussion among ourselves about which direction we want to do, whether we want to do, set up a matching grant situation or partner with the city with whatever they may be doing in the future in that area, those type of discussions. I think we need to have, educate ourselves a little bit, and I think this would help us with that.
I agree with Kevin. It was really fun to hear that kind of use of the funds that we collected because then you're actually putting it to work in the community where they're being collected. Instead of, you know, having them go to some other, some other area in the county or whatever. And it, I think it really showed, it also plants a seed in that community's success. And that can incent people like Combine Square to renovate and we can use that to leverage the existing businesses to renovate too. Because once you do that and they do some renovation, your example of Tool, Lakewood, you know, more people may come there. Not because the parking lot is repaved necessarily, but because they would have free money out of the parking lot and they could add one of their storage areas or free up some of the bottom decks they've got in their garden center. So it helps the businesses succeed. I think it's a great idea.
That's very inspiring. I really appreciate your, your enthusiasm. No, it's, you know, since I've been on the board, it's been a little frustrating to think that that's all we're dealing tool we had. And it was, it was enlightening to see that that's not the only tool we have and we can actually be more directly impactful. You know, one of the things that I think we've heard criticisms from people who've spoke to the board over the past couple of years I've been involved is that, you know, the developer or that property owner, like Shane Chang, who it's called, I know he's a billionaire, he doesn't need our money. You know, and there's, there's a miss, I think misinformation there on what urban renewal does. It doesn't necessarily increase his property. I don't, there's arguments that it has a negative impact. So to take those TIF dollars, give it to a developer that people perceive as helping his bottom line instead of helping the community. We're here, we're helping individual businesses who've been in business, how long has Tools been there? You know, and some of these other businesses, they've made the investment, they employ people who live in the city. I think it's just a more win-win situation than, especially in this project, it's so small, it is a small area that, you know, having, you can't have a developer come in and address everything in that area because he doesn't own all that property.
So, I interrupt you, I'm sorry. But if I understand what you're saying, you're saying we should look for, we should learn and we should look for opportunities to, where our charter allows us to seek to help the community improve. And if our charter allows it, then we pursue it and...
Well, it has to be within that zone. I mean, we can't go across the street. But that doesn't mean if the city does some master planning in there, some programming, they say, hey, the city script is, the streetscape here is part of what's holding back this. We need to be more approachable with what the curb like, look at the sidewalks and such. And it's both, let's say it's both sides of federal, they have a thing. Because it's in that area, we can actually go in and help them with both sides of federal, build out what that streetscape would look like. We, that we could do, but we can't do anything, let's say if there's a property across federal that has a sewer problem or a parking lot problem, let's say maybe Tools has with storms drainage, we can't address that. Within this, the plan, or Tools or any of the other ones that are within it, we can sit down and talk with them and say, what's holding you back? What are you, what are your biggest issues with improving your business?
That sounds very proactive, but I think that sounds great.
I think that's a good idea. And I don't know if it's the cart before the horse here with Maureen coming in, but I believe that there, we need to have a discussion about our own financials. Arvada's a very different animal than we are. They've got revenue. We have increment. And the law says increment is to be used to pay for debt. But I don't see how we can be funding these projects if we don't have debt to service. Now, if we're going to go borrow money in order to give businesses money for their projects, then we have debt, we can use increment for that. I'd like to understand, I mean, when we have $4 coming in, in the way of increment, it doesn't leave much room for paying back debt. And the other issue that I think still needs to be discussed by this group, because the old lift board really, as you know, you didn't accomplish a lot and there wasn't a lot of discussion. And we have sales tax increment from the three repealed urban renewal areas that amounts to quite a bit of money. And I believe there needs to be a discussion about that money being returned to the city. Because it's money that came from three repealed areas. I don't think it should be money that's being dumped into Combine Square. And the previous lift board, when there was a discussion about it, the reason they kept it was to use it for administrative costs rather than for any project-related expenses. So I want to have a good understanding of what we are allowed to do with our money by law and what we are not. We have a very different situation in Arvada.
We do, but we have some of the same limits. And I believe Maureen can help us, educate us on that because that's what she does every day. It's not, we're not on the same scale, I agree with you. But I don't, I think those are some of the questions we can have with Maureen when she joins us, that she could help us with. Because I didn't think we could do something on the other side of federal, but she said, no, if it's, let's say a streetscape improvement, we could do that on both sides of federal because of the way that we are allowed to. So, and we could discuss that, and we don't have that in front of us right now, so I don't want to have that argument now. But I think Maureen will help us with that and just educate us on what we can do. Because the other part of this is, if we start improving this area, and that's part of the cart before the horse thing is, we've not improved this area in four years. Our increment, what we're collecting, has not gone up because the base, it hasn't gone up much over the baseline. If we start improving this, we collect more because they still, the taxing authority is still based on the baseline. If we, if the improvements improve the tax income coming in, we collect more. We have more to start turning back into this area and improving this. And, you know, and if we have to start talking to, again, I want to be educated more on this, I think Maureen can help us with that and we start exploring, okay, how do we leverage future increments to get financing today to start helping these properties, on these businesses? I, again, I think that's where we need to start and go from there. I mean, whether we, the discussion, we can still have a discussion about the sales tax and what refunds are due there, that's a separate discussion, it doesn't... I think what's happened in the past is, the board has got mired down in some of these other discussions to sidetrack us from moving forward and doing something for the community that we've been charged to do. We can do both. We can sit here and start educating ourselves, talking about how we just move forward and also deal with other issues we may need to clean up from the former boards that have been involved. It's not one or the other. I think we can do both.
I agree, they're mutually exclusive, nobody, I don't think we're proposing, and I didn't hear you say that we take money that is...
No, I'm not saying that at all.
...in these other areas and that is a totally separate issue.
No, I'm not proposing that at all.
Well, and so what I would like to do, after we do, have a meeting with Maureen, maybe we have an attorney that specializes in this, they come in. Maureen's not an attorney. I've heard her speak. I want, in fact, I would be surprised if she gave us legal advice. So after we get...
We're not asking her for legal advice. We're asking her, what are your experience with implementing urban renewal projects within the scope of your experience?
That's fine.
And that's, she can talk to that. If we have legal questions after that, we can start with Mr. Kemp, get input from him, and if the board, we decide we want outside of other legal advice, we can go that route. But these two things are not mutually exclusive, one or the other. I think they're two separate areas and I think we can start moving forward. We owe it to the city to move forward and find ways that we can do what we've been charged to do with this area.
Chair, I believe I sent out some memos over about four or five months ago on some of these questions, but I know we have some new board members. And so what I'd like to do is just go ahead and to all the board members, I will resend those memos.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. So next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday is 6:30.
And I get off a plane at 4:20 here or so, if I'm a little late.
That's okay.
But I'll do my best.
Yeah, if Jack's going to be on time, he's going to try to, would then try to call and have him call in or something. So, that would be great.
So that's the 19th?
Correct. So that goes to the other part, we could tag on to that if they could be ready to meet with us Wednesday to discuss the RFP proposal for the attorney.
I would have...
I mean, you have to reach out and see.
Reach out to them. My only question is, is in an RFP process, is, are there any boundaries of the communication I have going forward with them or am I just free to email them and invite them and work out of time?
My recommendation would be that your, both the discussion and the interview should be based solely on the material in the RFP. I would not go beyond RFP, obviously. You may have questions there after, during the interview, perhaps about the level of urban renewal experience, or you may have questions that the interview brings up. And as long as they're related to the RFP, I think that's well within the board's ability to inquire.
As far as me reaching out to them, are there any limits to that?
I think, no, I mean, I think it's perfectly fine. Obviously, you can't commit for the board, but it's perfectly fine to reach out to them.
Okay.
Can we, if we were a study session and we decide after we interview that we want to do something, we will not be able to take action until the next month. So I'm suggesting that rather than study session, that we go into the regular, this is a regular meeting. And then if we want to take action, we would be able to do so that evening. If we don't, then we're fine. But I would hate to want to take action and then not be able to do it until our October meeting.
Now, these are pretty significant issues, and so I would defer because whether or not to hire the attorney, I think a lot will happen in an interview and you need to be able to digest that over a period of time. And the same with anything that our speaker does. I think, you know, we may want to, I don't, I think that'd be hasty action. I think we'd be better set up just to ask.
What date did we say we would make, let them know?
I believe October 4th.
Okay, so then here's the prior...
This prior...
So we need to set another meeting up then.
Is there a...
I don't believe there's an urgent need, we don't have anything in front of us that needs this right now. I, we, what concerns me is, we only have one firm that has responded. I think that we need to interview them, I think we need to think about it and discuss it and figure out if that's what we want to do. And I don't, I, and especially after the training session that we attended, you know, that was one thing that hit me is that, you know, when you put together a team to deal with these things, you want to make sure you've got the right team. And if you don't, things can go sideways very quickly. So I would, you know, after interviewing them, I think it's, we may call for another study session just to discuss it among ourselves about the process, this firm and so forth. We may meet with them and we fall in love with them and it's fine. Or, you know, there may be some of us that don't have some issues with them. Again, I don't think there's any urgent need to have an attorney retained. We don't have any pressing issue, you know, legal issues that Steve can't handle for us at this moment. So if we don't meet the October 4th period timeframe, then that's fine.
Yeah, I think our urgency was to start the process because we don't know when the need will arise.
Correct.
The process has started, so we won't be starting it when the need arises, so we're already...
Yeah, we're ahead of the game. I think we're being proactive in that area. I just don't want us to be rushing to anything unnecessarily.
I have a question.
Sure.
We're going to be interviewing attorneys and Joe will be here. Our city attorney will not be here, he's going to be on the back of an elephant somewhere.
But...
Is that, is that something we would want to have? I mean, do you envision a way that you would contribute to that or is that, are we okay on our own?
I would normally have Ms. McCollum, my assistant, participate in that process. And I will certainly have her available to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more question. As we set up all these different study sessions and actually honestly, even the regular lift meeting, forgive me if nobody else agrees with this, but it would be really super useful to me if, if somebody would just create these as calendar items and send them to us just to fill our calendars with stuff. Because right now, we use this thing where you say words out loud, like August 19th, and I copy them in my calendar and we all do the same thing. It would be actually probably pretty cool if somebody just sent us an invite. Do you think that'd be possible?
Yeah, I can do that. Yeah, I mean, I can do that, I just, yeah, that's not a big...
I'm not trying to make work for anybody, honestly.
What, I mean, how, once I have, how long does that take to set up? I mean, it's...
Nothing.
It's not, you're not asking me to move the building three inches, I mean, we can do that, so.
I'd just like to be invited.
I do, I like it.
Do you like formal invitations? Do I need to have them printed and... Okay, we can do that.
Are we going to try to determine, are you, Jason and Joseph going to come up with some questions so that when we come into this interview, we're not winging it?
Yeah.
With root territory?
Yes.
And can we submit suggestions to you as well and then just distribute to the rest of us so we know when we come in what to expect?
I don't think that's too much work.
No, I think that's appropriate. I also think that more questions will...
No, I think that's appropriate, I also think that more questions will come up in the course of the meeting. Specifically, you know, the two that are made have quite a bit of experience with municipalities, special districts, development, et cetera, but not urban renewal specifically. So I have a lot of questions surrounding their, you know, even if it's not urban renewal, but their experience of things that they would be dealing with, representing urban renewal board, and, you know, asking them what they know about urban renewal, if it's not specifically listed.
And I think I'd go through the RFP and look at the major things that we are looking for as a group, out of that, you know, what is your experience with urban renewal? If you don't have it, how are you going to help us address our needs? You know, those type of, you know, the highlights, and then like you said, as they answer questions, other questions, you know, will come up, it's just how the process works. But I think we should have a framework of, you know, a dozen questions or so based on the RFP. You know, they answered it in here, but let's see what they say, how they answered here when they've had time to think about it, and when they're sitting in a hot seat, are sometimes two different questions.
It does sound like a responsible thing to do, I'd love to hear from them.
Perhaps if anybody does have anything they'd want to recommend to us before we draft, maybe by the end of the weekend, if you have any mail with your thoughts, and then we can compile something and circulate, probably right before the meeting, since we're only talking about a week away.
So to recap, we're talking about doing the interview on which date? On, that's the 19th?
If they're available on that day. Otherwise, there were some other dates that this room is available, oh, I wrote them down.
Or stood our next regular meeting.
Or we do it to our next regular meeting, we could do it after that. So, let's just hope, hopefully they can, they can do something for us on Wednesday. If not, we'll, we'll plan a study session after our next regular meeting for that purpose. And then you can tell that
So, either way.
I'll reach out to them tomorrow, I'll probably send an email tonight.
All right. So we're missing, we should have our
Public comment number two.
Public comment session number two. So we'll go to that. If there's anybody who wishes to step forward and make any comments, they can do so now. Again, please limit your comments to three minutes, and state your name when you approach. Anybody wish to make any comments? Yes?
I'm still Kemp check, we're in the block now from here. It was useful to see the website live. What I realized is for me, redevelopment projects did not show the drop-down menu. All the other things, menu headers did show the drop-down. Eric got a drop-down, I didn't. He and I can work that out, so that's a good thing. Either I saw it too early, or there is some little setting in there that's not working. So, thanks for showing that, and I'm glad it's there. I do think it would be really, really good to have the surveys available as well, the products of Ricker Cunningham, those were certainly controversial at the time, and they should be available to look at, I think, yeah. So, you know, the Riverfront Authority that, you know, built the Riverfront Center that is now the Communications Dish Network Building, put out an RFP for a project, and it went bankrupt within four years. They issued bonds, and the bonds were defaulted on, and Littleton has a reputation because of that. So, and I think people have referred to that before, so I don't think this is new for anybody here. So, we do need to be circumspect in the way that we handle our money, and I'll make a comment, I mean, I think normally a business improvement district is formed for a group of businesses to improve themselves. I appreciate that sometimes public money, and these are taxes, that are being diverted for improvement through the government. That's a different process, and maybe it's appropriate, but maybe there's another way to approach Columbine Square, or Bellevue Court or improvement, other than quote-quote urban renewal, which frankly is supposed to cure slum and blight, and is supposed to be undertaken for public safety, and to cure conditions of blight. So, I just wanted to mention that. It is nice to be forward-looking and helpful to businesses, and, but it needs to be done very responsibly. And honestly, I feel like the responsibility is in this room, I'm not criticizing anybody that I've seen, but please be aware of the history and the pitfalls. And also, RVADA's urban renewal is controversial too. The five-story residence next to the old park in the historic area, a lot of people do not like, and, you know, it is good, and some people like it, and speak positively about it, other people say it's bad and they hate it. One expert is not enough, I'd like to hear from, I'd like to hear from some people who had difficulty, so they know what to overcome. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to go forward? Yes.
Hi, Jeanie Erickson and I live in District 1. I just wanted to make a comment regarding Maureen, the lady you want to bring in from RVADA for the study session. I think that's great to have a lot of people that are currently involved in urban renewal give us their opinions on what's going on, but like Pam said, I think we need more than one opinion. Our VADA's population is 117,000, Littleton's population is 46,000. They are three times larger than us, they probably have a lot of different things going on there, since they are so much bigger than us. And it sounds like they have a lot more money in their urban renewal than we do too, so I really do think the population and the ideas that that person has maybe won't relate to Littleton because of the size. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no other people coming forward, we'll close the second public comment session. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close. All right, thank you. Now we're going to go into our study session, where I will now turn it over to Mr. Kemp, so he can give us an update on the urban renewal. I always get stuck on my words.
This is really legal cases.
Legal.
And I was going to have a memo to you, and I have to admit, between budget, thank you Tiffany, and a requirement for me to be in Denver for a couple of days at a conference. The memo is not yet done, but I'm going to spend a very short time talking about the, there has not been any really significant urban renewal legislation to show in the legislature, which is actually a bit of a surprise. This is probably the first year in several years that urban renewal did not have significant attention to legislature. There were really, there are three cases going on in urban renewal in the courts that are all very interesting. The first is a case out of the city of Glendale, and it was in the 10th Circuit U.S. Court of Appeals. And what is involved was a property owner who argued that had violated their Fifth Amendment rights to due process under the U.S. Constitution, and their Colorado rights to due process under the Colorado Constitution, for the city to make a determination of slum and blight without notifying the property owners. And in the Colorado case, the city had not notified the property owners. The 10th Circuit U.S. Court of Appeals found that, yes, it did violate the property owner's rights, and that the property owner had a right because of the possibility that could diminish the value of the property, to notice of the council hearing where the slum and blight resolution was considered. That's highly, I would say it's highly unlikely that if they ask the Supreme Court review, that they will get it. And so as a result, likely, the end result of that case will be that if you make a slum and blight declaration, you will need to make sure you notify all of the property owners within the zone of slum and blight. The second case is actually an pending case, and this involves the South Metro Fire District in the town of Parker. And the question is, what is the meaning of the term debt under the urban renewal law? The fire district has taken the position that debt means actually issued debt. The district court found, and I think the correct reading of the statute is, the legislature did not say that, the legislature intended debt to be extremely broad, and it does not mean just debt that's actually issued. And when you read the statute, I think the district court got it right, because of the way the legislature wrote it in the statute. So that remains to be seen how that will come out. The third case is a very interesting case involving the town of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority. Wheat Ridge had a citizens initiative to write within their city charter a series of provisions involving urban renewal. And a project came in, and the urban renewal authority sued the city over the charter provisions. Among the charter provisions was a requirement for an election involving tax increment financing, there was also restrictions on the ability of condemnation by the urban renewal authority. And the district court held that those provisions were in violation of state law, that the state urban renewal law intended to preempt any local legislation in those areas, and therefore, the state urban renewal law, which doesn't require those types of votes, governs. Now, interestingly enough, the city of Wheat Ridge elected not to appeal the case to the Colorado Court of Appeals. Now, a district court judgment, from a lawyer's standpoint, doesn't have what we call precedential value, meaning that it's a reported judgment binding on everyone. If a case goes to the Colorado Court of Appeals, it's basically considered to be binding on everyone, because it's a reported case. These are not, but it is an interesting case because of the district court's position of the preemptive authority of the urban renewal law. And the district court's basis for that was actually based on some other cases that had been reported, not involving tax increment financing or condemnation, but in terms of how the authority is organized, where the courts did find that the legislature intended to preempt the cities. So, that is again, a case that's out there, and it's interesting from the standpoint of how the courts have read the statute. I think the, the fact is, in urban renewal, the numbers, by the number of projects, the fact is, in recent years, with legislation, the slum and blight provisions and other provisions of the Act have been amended to some degree, so I think the likelihood of seeing significant case law in the area of urban renewal is not very likely. I think we will continue to see a case here and there, but we won't see a significant case law. And so with that, those were going to be the three cases I was going to address in some degree, and you still will get the written memo, and I apologize for not having it with me tonight.
This is very useful, thank you.
I'd be happy to answer any questions about any of those cases.
Steve, were you going to talk about some of the changes in the urban renewal law since this lift board was established?
I would be happy to go back and sort of summarize the changes, say, over the last five years, because there has been some changes, and I will include that in the memo, sort of a summary of the changes over the last five years. Because while there's not been any changes this year, previous to this year, there was some more significant changes.
I'm going to wait for the memo before I
And so, and if you have any, if any board member has any questions after I send out the memo, please feel free just to contact me, please don't reply to all, to me, and I will reply to all of you. But if you do that, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
Is there anybody talking about what 73 would, will do to tax increment financing if it's passed?
Proposition 74?
73.
73, which is
Is the school funding statewide?
Oh, the school funding. That's going to be an interesting, it's not so much based on property taxes, it is going to increase the income tax on certain classes of wage earners. Now, what the schools, I know I'm looking at is, is the schools are saying, well, we, if this passes, what we want to do is ask for a bond issue that can be paid with property taxes, but authorize an increase in our expenditures under Tabor, and then if the proposition passes, we'll simply elect not to issue the property taxes.
That's, that's different. If the 73 passes, it's going to change the property assessment rate.
Yes.
So, how does that impact, and maybe, maybe nobody's talking about, maybe nobody knows what to do.
What I'll do is, I'd like to go back and take a look at that, because in terms of the property assessment rate, and our report on this memo.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much, Steve.
Your pleasure.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
We look forward to that. Sure will, Steve.
I'm excited.
We're all lawyers. All right, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you.